Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day that you've given us this opportunity to gather together. To state the issues of this county, Father, we are thankful for the blessings that we have here in this county, and may we always remember that the blessings that we do have and enjoy come from you. Father, we ask that you watch over and guide us and give us the direction that we should go. Be with us this evening. Ralph Sprig, Science Holy Name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the proud, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Hold the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Aberwater. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Chris Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. Item number five, anything withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir. Nothing withdrawn nor deferred.
Item number six submitted for site plan approval. Item A, Danny Patel Site Plan, item number is 14-3005. New construction of 20,828 square feet, including canopies, on 5.3 acres zoned commercial services, located at 118 Crescent Road. Danny Patel is the applicant. As you will recall, this item was deferred at the March 24th meeting.
Yes, sir. Before we get started on that, I think you jumped over the approval of the minutes. Did you want to take care of that first?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes. I'll call on our vice chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, that's a visual aid motion. We're approving March 24th then.
Thank you. And a second. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, sir. In regards to the Patel Site Plan, as you recall, this was deferred at the Planning Commission's March 24th meeting. There were several items that were on our punch list, if you will, that still had to be addressed. The design engineer has taken care of most of those items. There's still a couple of things outstanding. Nothing that would, if this is approved tonight, nothing that we couldn't do, subject to staff comments. Really, just a couple of minor things as far as identifying some aisle width in the parking area on the south side of the building, showing the septic tank location. They have the souls area shown, but the septic tank location, I didn't see right off the bat. It looks like on their landscape plan that they've got the proper landscape materials identified on both the north and the west side. However, they've got them, it looks like they've got them labeled differently. The thicker buffer is actually labeled as the less intense of the two. So really, that's, I think that's just more of a typo than anything like that. The other issue that staff had identified, actually was more of a question of the applicant, is you see on the site plan, it shows you've got the convenience market, then a retail shop as phase one and phase two. At this time, based on the conversations we've had with the applicant, unless that's changed over the last few days, they're really just looking for approval of phase one at this point, which would be the convenience market and gas station. The retail portion of it would come at a later time, so that would come back before you, whenever they wanted to move forward with the retail portion of that. From a planning standpoint, that's most of the comments that we had. I'm going to turn this over to our engineer, Mr. Eric Hill, who's got some items he wants to discuss on the, I don't have a pointer, sir. But, and he's got several things that he wants to talk about on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to him.
As, you may remember this from a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the traffic out here. And the traffic on this side is tricky. It's tricky. This, just to kind of start with an overview, as you, if you look at the plat before you, of course, this is south of town, so the majority of traffic in the mornings is going north toward town, and in the afternoons, the majority of the traffic is coming south. We originally talked about this entrance that they have coming in and out of US 231. And my biggest concern was, and it still is, is this lane that they're showing coming back on to 231 because of the proximity to the intersection. My concern is the traffic in the mornings, as they're going north, traffic coming into the convenience store, and then as they exit out, if they come out of that exit there, and then coming into this intersection and making a U-turn, I just feel like we're adding some conflict points there that are, that could have some safety issues. The engineer, we have worked extensively on this with the engineer, and they've been good to work with, and we've had a lot of discussion and thoughts back and forth. And you'll see on the plan before you, they have this proposed turn lane here in the middle, which, when we first talked about it, I think we both liked it, and then maybe the next day, we both didn't like it, and then maybe we liked it again. We've been back and forth. There's good things and bad things on this. And this goes back to some of the issues you have with traffic, because there's not, I've got all the manuals, and all the books, and all the training, but sometimes on traffic, there's just, there's just things that are gray, and this is one of those situations. It makes sense to have storage there on that median to allow for cars to do this U-turn, but then again, you're promoting cars doing a U-turn, which isn't a very good situation. As a general rule, it's not a great idea to put a turn lane where there's not a road going 90 degrees, and there's no road on the east side of 231 here. I think in hindsight, this turn lane is probably not a good idea, and I've talked with the design engineer on this. And I also think that we probably need a deceleration lane here to the north, as you see on the plan, so that as traffic comes in from town, that they can get out of the flow of traffic and get into the side. And talked with the design engineer on that. I don't think that'll be a big issue. I think they were in agreement on that. I still think the biggest issue on this is whether it's a good idea to allow traffic to come back out on 231. I think ingress is, is no problem at all, but the egress on to 231 is still the issue. I think doing a deceleration lane and not doing this proposed lane in the middle is a better plan than what we had, but I still, I'm still just not very confident about the traffic coming out. I like the thought of utilizing this existing intersection there, Crescent Road. But the applicant's always also saying that this is, that's crucial to the convenience store, and I'm not, that's not my expertise, and it may be, and I respect that. So, at the end of the day, I guess I really want to make you guys aware of kind of what I'm looking at. I do think that the proposed plan in front of us here to, with the turn lane in the middle, I think we should not do that. A deceleration lane coming from the north, and then I guess the decision needs to be made now about whether they should be allowed to exit on 231 or not.
Eric, does a deceleration lane come in, turn in, or?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't go all the way to Crescent. Well, it would depend. With, with the proposal you have in front of you, the deceleration lane would just go from the entrance to the gas station. As you can see, they've got this little triangle curb here in the middle, and those are typically all concrete to kind of keep that flow of traffic in, so you couldn't do. And that was part of the concern, and we've talked extensively about this. If you put a deceleration lane right there, will somebody that's not very familiar with it think that's for Crescent Road and get in that lane to try to go all the way through, and then a vehicle come out of the gas station thinking that that car's going in to the gas station, and there'd be a collision point there? It's, conflict points is the term that you use when you're looking at traffic, and you always try to reduce conflict points. That's, that's the issue I have with the traffic coming back out on 231. It just, we increase our conflict points. But Craig, I think a lot of people out there use the shoulder as a deceleration lane already for Crescent Road, but, but I don't think, there's no design or plan to make that on 2 Crescent.
Yeah, I see why, but on all the highways, you're going side or?
Stripe or not? Yeah.
Eric, so do you think the entrance coming off of 231, going into this property, and then got the concrete triangle, just for entrance only, that that's, that's a, that's a problem? That people are going to use it as an exit if there's nobody coming in? I mean, if, if, if we do this here, we're encouraging them to come out that way, depending on whether they're going to come out and turn left and go the wrong way, or if they're going to come out and go back toward Shelbyville.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand your, I think I understand your issue. There is a, there is a real big gray area here, but what? Well, I'm, you've almost convinced me then that we don't need to do this triangle deal right here, that we need to?
Well, as far as, and there is some concern.
Strictly an entrance, and your exit would have to come out on Crescent.
I think that's the safest option, you know, and then you could do do not enter signs facing the parking lot to prevent that. And, and we talked about this last month, just to be clear, you know, if this curb cut or this intersection wasn't here, I don't think this would be an issue. You know, cars would come in, and they would go back out, and they'd go south. It's, the concern is the cars that are going north, that go to this site, that try to come out and do that U-turn there. And it's a 60 mile an hour road, and so when we start piling cars up in a median cut, it's only got room for two. Like, my, this is Eric's theory, I always, the book says one thing, but I always think about that guy that I honked at this morning. What's he going to do? You know, what's that guy that, I'm like, what do you do? That's the guy I'm thinking about here, you know? And so, but that's, that's my concern there.
So, Eric, so in case I missed it, you still want to slope that entry, do you not, or have some sort, maybe not the whole island, but at least put that entry at an angle where they would have to go out and make a hard turn back? We wouldn't want that to be square, where they could?
Right.
Make that right hand easily. We'd want to make it very difficult, would we not?
Yes, yes. And what they've got shown here is pretty close to that. I mean, you still try to keep somewhat 90 degrees, but you, you could angle that back in a way that?
Do away with that exit, and everybody would exit over here.
And, and the applicants here, and Mr. Bratcher may be able to explain better the importance of that, of that exit. And I mean, I won't, I respect that from those guys, and they've been saying this since day one, but when I'm, I'm looking at the, the traffic and the safety on this, I just want you guys to know what I'm, what I'm seeing and my concerns are. And Chris has been doing this a long time. He may be able to tell you something that, that I don't know.
I've got another question for Doug. You mentioned they're just wanting to do phase one at this point in time. With phase two being proposed or somewhere down the line, do you have to have any type of temporary buffering or anything between one and two? Does that require anything? Because that phase two could be 10 years and?
They're showing a, a buffer along the property line already, not between?
I'm talking about right here, between one and two. I mean?
Right.
If two didn't exist, it had to be buffered.
Well, no, it's all part of the, the same property at this point. It's all zoned commercial, so you wouldn't have to put any kind of a buffer. Now, they are showing a buffer on the northern property line, which?
I thought that'd be a waste of time to have to put a buffer in for what could be six months, could be six years, but I just wanted to make sure we address that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it'd be on the property line, not, they wouldn't have to do one between the two phases.
Okay.
Mike, can you use your?
Sure.
Thanks.
If we're okay with the development, and that's an assumption that we're all okay with the development, but the issue is still traffic. Do we, could we approve it based on additional traffic studies, or not studies, but traffic design? Or do we just need to defer it until additional traffic information?
Doug, tell me if I'm wrong, and I think you can do that. And honestly, I would like to have a little guidance about what, I mean, it's basically, do we let cars out on 231 or not? Now, the details from there, I could work that out with the engineer, but you know, I would like to have some guidance from you guys on, you know?
I mean, could we, could we absolutely say that there will be no exit on 231? That anything entering 231 must exit on the Crescent Road opening?
Thank you, go ahead.
Sign around that, whatever barriers are needed. I mean, you'd have to probably lose that small fuel island right there in the middle that separates the?
They've got a, they've got an exit on Crescent Road, exists, shown on the plan. See on the rear, the 30?
Right, right. But I'm, I'm just trying to think of traffic flowing through that property. I don't know if that, that two-island bay?
Oh, that diesel pump on the side?
Yeah, that may, I don't know if that restricts that or not.
I think they'd play, I think there's enough room to, to do a travel lane beside it, because that's, you're looking at the canopy.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That's just a thought. I'd like to hear what others think. But I, I'd be willing to, to say exit only on Crescent, if that is really a safety concern that you have. But I'd like to hear from other commissioners.
I tend to agree. Since this thing come up before, you know, kind of looked around, thought about different. I used to, we used to supply convenience stores in the business I was in, and we've got two situations here in Rutherford County that almost the same thing. Over on Thompson Lane, the map code's a BP. If you're on the Thompson Lane side, you can't go back the other way. It's kind of got this deal in there. And, but if you look at that curb, there's tire marks across it. People do it every day. I mean, I've, I've seen them do it, and, and I almost caught myself, oh, that's one of those. I got to go on down, I got to do this, I got to do that. Coming off at this rate of speed, though, you know, on a four-lane deal, it's a little different than even over on Thompson Lane. And then you've got over on, I guess it's Norfield or Rutherford over there by the Culvers, almost the same thing over there, you know? Anyway, it's one of those gray issues, but I mean, anyway, I want, I want to hear the applicant. You said they, you know, I know Chris has been in a long time in convenience store business too, and, and see, it doesn't matter really what you, if we do this right here, there's going to be somebody to go out that other way. I don't care what kind of signs you put up, what you, what you do, there, there's going to be somebody. And we've got to make sure that we do this right, so there's not a life loss there. We don't want to cause an issue like that. And so, that's a difficult decision right there alone, so.
Now, will 18-wheelers be entering and exiting this property?
At a minimum, their fuel trucks will have to come in, and you can see on the drawing here, that rectangle drawn between the fuel canopy and 231, that's, that's where their tanks will be. So, so at minimum, they'll, they'll be coming in to fuel those, and so?
Just the fuel tank?
Well, yeah. And we can't limit 18-wheelers, and they may, 18-wheelers may go in there. I don't, I don't know that we have a way of limiting that from them stopping in there.
Chris, you want to?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Eric, what about exiting on Crescent Road? We were talking about having two, two lanes to exit out, one to go south, and then one to go, I don't see that on there. Has that been discussed in more detail?
About the 38-foot cut on the back, back there?
On Crescent Road? When you exit out of Crescent, on the Crescent Road, we talked about having a right turn lane to go south.
If, if you look at, if you flip a couple more pages in the plan, and that, I guess this goes for everybody, there's a, a plan that's called the roadway improvements plan. You'll see a lot, a lot more detail as far as the?
Yes, yes. It's in his drawing, here. Sheet 2B. Yes. Chair.
Eric, what, what I'm looking at right here, and I'm just, see if I'm looking at this straight. I'm at the roadway improvement plan is what I'm looking at, but, so what I'm seeing there is the widening area that you have there on, in, in front of the, the convenience store there, we're showing a proposed shoulder widening there, right?
Yes.
That is basically a U-turn lane.
Yes, sir. We would be promoting?
Out of road across there that they'd be turning to, they'd just be a U-turn to head back north, right?
Be storage for U-turns, basically.
So somebody, when they pulling that U-turn, and we've got two lanes coming out of there, so person there is going to have to be looking four different directions to make that U-turn. I see what you're talking about.
It's, I, we could talk about it one way, and it'd sound good, and you talk about it another way, it'd sound bad. I mean, it's, you know?
And then Eric, what about that 38-foot opening that goes on to Crescent Road? I'm concerned about phase two. You've got about 60 parking spaces up there. I just counted it quickly, so, I mean, that's pretty high volume in addition to a convenience store that's pretty high volume. Is that 38-foot width, you see that being large enough to handle that kind of traffic?
It's typically a 12-foot lane, so I mean, that would be, you know, three lane, that provide three lanes with striping, you know, if needed.
Anything else? Chair, do you have to get on?
And if I, if I may. Traffic is somewhat subjective in, in issues like this, and so, this site creates more traffic than we've seen probably since left shovel stop. And, and that one was a little different. Now, there's right off the interstate. But, and so this is, it's a little different than what we've seen in the past. So that's why staff has took a lot of time to look at this and met with the applicant. The applicant's been great, and they've, we've, we've worked with them. We just want to make sure that, that we're all on the same page here. I mean, now's the time to talk about this. And so, we just, I want to make sure y'all know, that's, that's why we're putting so much thought into this, is, it's, this is a, it's a high-traffic-producing side, producing side, just a lot of cars are going to use it, you know?
Eric, on Crescent Road, you've got an arrow going straight across, and then you've got the turn lane going back toward the school, correct?
Yes, sir. And that, that should be a left turn. It's, it's straight across two lanes to the median and then turn left.
Well, the right-hand turn towards, towards school?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, is it wide enough, it is wide enough right there to accomplish that, is it not?
They're going to have, they're showing about a two-foot shoulder. They're going to put on that, that hatched just below the words Crescent Road and above. So they'll have to widen that, kind of that narrow part just a little, about two feet on both sides.
But there's enough, they won't have to buy a right away. There's enough, there's enough for that.
No, it'll fit with the right away, yeah.
Okay. Now, you're not showing an acceleration lane there, are you, on 231?
No, and, and I don't think, you've got a pretty good sight distance right there from the intersection. You can see back a good ways, and so, and plus, there is a wide shoulder, and so if someone needed it. But, but I think sight distance-wise, I think it's okay.
I may have missed the answer a minute ago. When Pettis asked about this U-turn lane in the middle, is your recommendation to take that out?
Take it out.
I would hope so, because there's no purpose for that, yeah.
Right.
Good evening, Chairman, and Planning Commission members. I'm Chris Bratcher. I'm here to represent the applicant. He's not here. We, we've had a good time working with Eric and the staff, but our, our situation is, this being a convenience market, we don't, we don't feel like it's unlike most convenience stores all across from Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Egress and ingress is very important to the survival of, of any business, but especially a convenience market. We feel like that, as you look at that, when you talk about a ride-in and ride-out only, that's okay with us, we can live with that, but we feel, and we're okay with doing that. The median dictates that you can't turn left anyway. There's a huge divided median in between the highway, so people can't really turn left anyway. It's similar to, as I look around, you look at the Murphy Oil over on Memorial, they have a ride-in and ride-out, and they're basically 15 feet from another street. This ride-in and ride-out's about 250 feet from the intersection. It's a lot of space between the ride-in and ride-out and Crescent Road. And it's, like you said, Mr. Sandlin, it was like the BP on Broad. You can turn right in and ride out right in front of Huston Engineer from that BP. Even though you could turn left, the median's just painted. It's impossible to turn left from this ride-in and ride-out because there's a grass median in between there. It's, it's similar to, I think there's a C and E market right down the street on the opposite side of the road that has a street that comes out beside it, and they have, they don't have a ride-in and ride-out, they just have entrances in and out onto this highway. This highway was designed for businesses, and I think this highway will accommodate this. I don't want to complicate this or blow it out of proportion, but it's pretty much a typical convenience store market with wanting the people in and out. And I think if you stacked them all up, trying to get them out on, on that small county Crescent Road, it may be more dangerous than letting them turn in and out on that major road. It's very crucial to my applicant to do this. Without that, I think it restricts, and I really don't know of many businesses around town that only have a ride-in, especially on a major road. It's pretty, I, I can't think of one. We would, we've done the traffic study, we've done the widening of Crescent Road, we've done anything you want us to do, but I would ask you that this ride-in and ride-out, we'll be glad to do that, even though I think a normal entrance would be fine, but we'll do whatever. But it's very crucial to this development. It's, it's just pretty much a mom-and-pop convenience store, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions, if you have any. And I know there's a new Dollar General that's right across from the Crescent Market that kind of complicates that, and on their end, and I don't know, I think they just have a normal entrance in and off of the shovel highway, so, and they generate quite a bit of traffic as well, which is right down the road from this.
Question for Eric. What is the traffic count? Do you know what the traffic, the trip generation is on this?
Chris, I don't have it in front of me. Are we 3,000 a day? Does that sound right?
I didn't, I don't know.
I do not have it in front of me.
I didn't do the traffic study, and that was, Bill Huston did that, and I have never seen it. I just know we did one when we were asked to do one.
And then the distance from Crescent Road, like where you would pull out and go left, what's the distance from that? Looks like, I'm just trying to follow the scale, looks like it's roughly maybe 150 feet or so?
Probably 175, you know, somewhere between 150 and 200 feet between where you would come out and, and the intersection there.
That person trying to turn left is going to have to dodge people exiting and people coming along 231. What's the visual distance like there?
You can see, you can see back.
Both of those things, you would be able to see easily, somebody's about to exit the gas station? They wouldn't, you wouldn't be surprised by that?
Well, if, yeah, I think so. I mean, I think, I think you could see. If you were sitting at this intersection, I mean, you can, the sight distance is enough that you'd be looking back, you, you would see if a car was coming out.
Any other questions for Mr. Bratcher while he's up here?
Well, while we're mulling that over, how about the drainage? Are we good on the drainage? The, the property, or the neighbors beside you over there was real concerned about the drainage and everything, and what goes on and comes off this property and everything. Are we, Eric, are we, we got the drainage thing taking care of?
Good drainage plan. I'm, I'm very pleased with it. They, they work with us. It's, it should be no impact to the downstream.
The applicant's actually agreed to, I think, do two large detention areas that would not only take care of his, but take care of an existing issue that's already there. And he's using up quite a bit of land for drainage.
Good deal.
Downstream should see no impact drainage-wise.
Well, I'm just proud to see y'all taking care of drainage. I mean, you know, when they bought, I'm sure, a long time ago, they never thought, you know, convenience store beside them or something, you know? I mean, we all think that. Times change and everything, but, and also, the other question, Chris, Mr. Bratcher, with the phase two, what do you think phase two's going to be?
I, I think?
Realistically, nothing to hold you to or anything, I know, but it's, you know, what's, what's been the owner's thoughts there?
You know, I think phase two is just a afterthought. He bought all of that, he had his own commercial, and I think, I don't think he has any plans or any, anything in particular going there at this point. I can't speak for him, but that's what he had alluded to us at our meeting the other day. He has no plans for that. It's just a box on a piece of paper, basically. What he's, what his business is, is a convenience store business.
And Chris, what is the future of the house that's to remain?
Sorry?
There's a house that's to remain on the property?
Yes. The house will, as far as I know, his intentions is to leave the house where it's at now.
And what will its purpose be?
I can't, I'm sorry. I, I don't know. He just told me he has no intention of moving the house.
And it'll have a separate ingress and egress? It won't utilize this parking lot?
No, it has its own, way down the road, way down Crescent Road, it has its own driveway.
Ms. Allen, if I could, I found a traffic study in the file.[1756.36] Ms. Allen, if I could, I found a traffic study in the file, it looks like the traffic council on 231 are somewhere between twenty-four-seven and twenty-five-nine thousand going north and south, and then Crescent Road's about fourteen-hundred, a little over fourteen-hundred.
Is that, is that priority this year's?
That's existing daily traffic council prior, yes.
Yeah, I think they have a diesel pump, yeah.
Allen, the, the traffic report, trip generation totals are three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven daily trips, that's, that's in and out, that's in and out.
I'm sorry, the numbers I was giving you was just average daily travel up and down the road, I thought that's what you meant, sorry.
And that's dispersed.
Our belief is that most of the traffic will, will be southbound traffic, I think northbound traffic in the morning, if people are creatures of habit like me, going to work, I don't have a lot of time, and if I do need to stop, I'll stop at a store on that side of the road, instead of making a, a left turn and going into this and trying to make another left turn, coming back out, not saying that that won't happen, but I would think most people, if they're like me, they won't do that, they'll, this is a going home side of the road, and it's pretty much for the neighborhood.
Ignorance 201 puts your store on going home side.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think the other thing we need to take into consideration is the Davenport Station, that's, we passed a few, a few months back, that's going to be developing just north of that property, you will have some increase in traffic due to that, at some point in time, that those numbers will, will possibly go up even more than what we see today, I tend to have concerns as well about the, about the U-turn, if people can do it, they're going to do it, I mean, that's just how we are, and as far as going toward town, I mean, you look, there's the C and E market down to the south, but unless something develops from the Walmart that's going in as far as a gas station, there's nothing else till you get to the interstate, and that's the pilot, everything else is houses or businesses, there's no convenience, so, something else we need to consider, I think, moving forward is the impacts that other developments are going to have on that area, and Davenport Station's not that far, so, people in the morning will come out, run down there and get them something, and then go, especially if they turn off before they get to the interstate, so, I do have concerns as well about the U-turn.
Ready for motion?
I'm just going to say, we've got our expert sitting here, we pay him, send him to school and everything to learn how to do all this stuff, and he may have went to Auburn, but he still probably knows a little bit about it. And when our expert is sitting there giving us a recommendation, and I actually understood the recommendation, a lot of times experts speak, I can't comprehend all of it, but a lot of businesses, most businesses aren't on a corner, and they have a way in, a way out, and they might be side-by-side, they might be separated, this one's on a corner, and so you can have a way in here and a way out there, I don't see this being that detrimental to the success of this business, I have to disagree with Mr. Bratcher on that one small item, but I don't like the U-turn lane in the middle, I don't like the left turn and trying to jump across that, so I'll make a motion to approve this with County Engineer's recommendations.
If I could interject, is that just for Phase One, and then all other staff comments as well?
Yeah, for Phase One, and staff comments, no.
Second, just to make that a little bit more clear, there'll still be a right-hand turn, but, into it, but no right-hand turnout.
Right-hand entrance into off of 231, and all exits are to be on Crescent Lane.
Stand.
And in my opinion, it's not beyond reason for this to get built, and if three years from now it's not functioning well, then come back up, or we can amend this plan if worst comes to worst, and, and we could always, they could always put another curb cut in there, but, you know, but personally, I feel confident with the County Engineers' recommendation.
Motion, and a second to approve with staff comments. Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's okay, Steve, go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to think of the question, I'm just, I'm really torn of the, I mean, this design has worked and this design has not worked, you know, Mr. Bratcher made a couple of good statements, though, that, you know, where he's seen this type thing, which is right across from Huddleston Steel, you know, at that, the one I was talking about over on Thompson Lane, it comes out on Thompson or comes out on Broad, and you've got that, you've got that median looking at you, so you can't do that, you know, you got to go right. Our main thing is safety, that's the thing, you know, so, not necessarily is it going to be, from this motion, is it going to be a right into this property, and it come out on Crescent, I know that's what your motion is, but you're leaving it up to the engineer too, if they so decide tomorrow or whatever to do this design, then that's what you're going to do, is that?
No.
No, it's not? It's a right-in and, and out on Crescent?
On Crescent, absolutely.
Period, okay.
And it's, that's just, it's been my concern since day one, the, the exit on 2231, just above that intersection, I just, I just feel like we're that close to that intersection, we should utilize it, it's...
Sample's given, the Murphy, the BP, and all are all in thirty-mile speed zones with a red light right there, those people are going thirty miles an hour supposedly, and half the time they're about to stop, there's not a red light right there, so nobody's stopping, and they're doing sixty miles an hour and stuff, so you, you can't merge out into sixty mile-an-hour traffic like you can into thirty mile-an-hour traffic, in my opinion.
It's the quadrant of this intersection, if you take this site and go across Crescent Road, it's no issue, it's because it's upstream, that's why it's the issue, and it's, it's very unique, I haven't found a situation just like it yet, I've been looking.
And the applicants?
Applicants, when you brought up this, they're going to work with it anyway, I think I, I heard Mr. Bratcher saying he's, they're going to work with it anyway, but it's just the point of, they really like to have the right-in and right-out right there.
And they've said that since day one, I mean, that they, they would really like to have a right-out, and, you know.
Any other questions before we vote? I have a motion to approve with staff comments, and a second, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Item number seven, rezoning request scheduled for public hearings, item seven A, Jamie Reed for Park Trust Development LLC, item number is 14-a002, location is Thompson Road, County Commissioner is Gary Farley, the size of the site is approximately thirty-three acres, tax map 138, parcel 10.00, existing zoning is residential medium density, proposed zoning is a PUD, planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, as you stated, this property is located along Thompson Road, this is a part of the originally approved Pinnacle Hill subdivision, this was originally approved as a traditional subdivision, R-15 zoned at the time at their May 8, 2006 Planning Commission meeting, the original development was proposed to have a total of one-hundred-and-fifty-five single-family homes on one-hundred-and-seventeen acres, the final plat, which was included in your agenda materials for Phase One, was recorded in August of 2007 with a total of fifty-nine lots, the applicants proposing to rezon about thirty-three, thirty-four acres to a planned unit development to allow for ninety-five lots, which does represent a thirty lot difference from the original sixty-five that were proposed, they are proposing to dedicate approximately six acres of open space, that was not included in the original plans of the subdivision, this, we've actually had this on the agenda for the last two to three months now, one of the biggest issues that the applicant was dealing with was the setbacks on the proposed sites, normal setbacks in what's an RM, originally what R-15, zone is forty feet, they were proposing twenty-foot setbacks, as I recall, that was becoming problematic for CUD and placing their step tanks on the lot, having enough room to actually situate the tank on the lots, since that time, and we've met with CUD, the applicants met with CUD, they have changed that front setback to thirty-five feet, but they have removed the sidewalks that were going to be a part of this development in the beginning, they're also proposing to have a minimum lot sizes from fourteen-hundred to about twenty-four-hundred square feet, that's a little bit different from what was proposed originally in their pattern book, the applicant's been made aware of that, he will address that as, when the public hearing starts, they did have a neighborhood meeting on this on January 29th, a little earlier this year, to allow some surrounding neighbors to review the proposal, the applicants did make a few additional concessions based on the input that were received at that meeting, namely, the materials of the houses going into the subdivision off of Thompson Road, I'm not going to go into just a whole lot more detail on this, I know the applicant is present, and I think they have a presentation as well that they'd like to go through, but you have a copy of the pattern book, one was emailed to you, and you should have a color rendering on your tables as well, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Well, I'm sorry, I always forget to do this, this is just some surrounding photo, this is the main entrance to the subdivision, the area is actually, you see that whole grown-up area in the background, that's the area in question, but this just kind of gives you an idea of how the subdivision's already developed, there's a number of houses out there already in the first phase.
That may have answered my question, I was wondering how much was built out on Pinnacle Hills Drive, so there's thirds of the way or something built out, there are, there are less than halfway built out or something like that?
The, when I originally did these comments, there were about twenty lots still available in the section at the end of the year, now I haven't gotten the most updated number, I don't recall just a lot of development in that subdivision since then, but of the original fifty-nine lots, there's about twenty-one remaining, so there's, there's about thirty-some homes, thirty homes or so in that area, almost forty.
Doug, when you mentioned the sidewalks were removed because of the issue with the step system, was that just sidewalks in a particular area, or was that all sidewalks?
The sidewalks in this plan development, yeah, throughout the plan development, see, what, what ended up happening, if, again, for citing the, the step tank, if there is going to be a sidewalk, they need just a few more feet of, of room, so they'd need a forty-foot setback, as opposed to a thirty-five-foot setback without a sidewalk, so, because these are smaller lots than what you would typically see in a traditionally zoned area, being RM, minimum fifteen-thousand square foot, they opted to go with the, the smaller setback with the thirty-five foot, without a sidewalk.
Do you have any concern about how that's going to impact, because typically, a planned unit development encourages pedestrian traffic, do you have any concern about how that's going to impact pedestrian traffic in that area?
Not a lot, the, the area that they are proposing for, the, the most usable, the open spaces really toward the front of the subdivision, I, I don't have just a lot of concerns about that, I mean.
We're going to go to a public hearing, and Jamie, are you going to make the presentation? We'll make the presentation as part of the public hearing, so, at this point in time, we'll declare the public hearing open, and the first part of it will be the presentation by the applicant, and I believe Jamie Reed is going to do that, Jamie?
Evening, everybody, I'm Jamie Reed with SCC, I was going to allude to what the sidewalk comment real quick while we was on that topic, the one, the main reason we're, we're pulling out the sidewalks, I think a lot of people are, are going to, is because they are requesting that the sidewalks be outside the right-of-way on these developments, which, about twelve feet off the curb gutter, which falls onto people's lots, and then there, you're, you're left with, well, I got a sidewalk right in the middle of my lot now, and then, then it's on, the lot owners are liable for a sidewalk on their lot, so everybody's been debating on, do we put them in there now, because we, everywhere else, we've got sidewalks, you know, a couple of feet off the back of curb, so they're, you know, kind of bouncing around those issues with the Highway Department, but anyhow, not that we didn't want to, but...
Well, so, then what's your expectation about how people are going to get from their homes to the public, to the common spaces?
They'll walk along the road, and there's going to be, there's, well, just walk along the road, we felt that the people within the subdivision don't want more people walking through their, middle of their yard, I mean, why would I, I wouldn't want somebody, if I lived out there, I wouldn't want somebody walking through my yard, I mean, in theory, your car's going to be pulled up in a driveway, and then everybody's going to have to come down, walk around that car, come down, walk out the road, I mean, it's, it's, and I, I can understand the Highway Department, we've been bouncing back and forth on that issue, but I think that's going to be a hot topic in the future on all these, because who wants to have a sidewalk out in the middle of their...
Well, the idea of rear entrances at all?
Well, no, because they're, all the lots are narrow lots, yeah, they're the narrow lots with the front entry garages, so you set them back enough to get your cars to park in there, but yet, then if your sidewalk's not up at the road within the right-of-way, it's up in your property, you know, twelve foot past the curb, so if you got a, let's say, a thirty-foot setback, then your sidewalk is, is right in the dead center of that distance.
We don't have any flexibility on that twelve-foot setback, Doug?
Sorry?
We don't have any flexibility on that twelve-foot setback? He said that the sidewalk has to be twelve feet back from the curb.
Okay, well, I, I think it kind of varies a little bit as far as in our subdivision regulations, Eric, do you want to?
Yeah, in this right-of-way section, because it's a fifty-foot right-of-way and, and the roadbed is inside of that, and so it just works out, to, to get the sidewalk outside of the right-of-way ends up being twelve feet, on a forty-foot right-of-way, it ends up being seven feet, which is, I think, was kind of the target number, when we, we all originally looked at this with the sub regs, and we talked about that, and, and I agree with Jamie, it's, it's something that we need to probably start looking at again, as far as figuring out what's, you know, what's feasible, and what's, you know, because we, we want to do, if you remember the conversations we had about sidewalks and the liability is the problem, you know, and, and Mr. Brooks was in all that conversation, and, and a lot of valuable input, and, but, you know, we get into this, you know, if we're going to do without them, are we better off to take the liability or not have them, and I don't know the answer to that right now, that's something we probably are going to have to address very soon.
We're not opposed to sidewalks, and that's not what we're saying, we're not opposing them at all, but, I mean, who would want them sitting off, you know, you got the first section of the subdivision may have them right behind the curb, and then these later sections, now they're wanting them, you know, way out, you know, so, anyhow, I didn't mean to go off on that, I'm sorry, anyhow, Pinnacle Hills is PUD construction plans, like Doug alluded to earlier, we're not increasing the density on this development, it's basically the step system is approved for, what is it, one-hundred-and-fifty-five lots totally, that's all that we can build out, what we've done is condensed that area down, actually five lots less than what we were previously approved, just wanted to kind of go over that with y'all, there is approximately almost six acres of common area that we're adding, along with some walking trails and stuff in the back, page number two kind of goes over, shows the square footage of the open spaces, and the narrowness of the lots to get away from, actually, usable parts of the lots and stuff. And I'll get back into, kind of go over this stuff real quick with y'all, sheet number six kind of goes over the minimum square footage of the lots, their average of seventy-two, hundred-square-foot, average lot sixty by one-twenty, each of the lots will have decorative mailboxes, two-car garages, and on the setback issue, we're getting back, this is why we come back in, we were delayed a couple of months, we were bouncing around a few issues with CUD, and they're, they're having issues placing some of the step tanks within the front of the lots, and this is where it's getting into that sidewalk issue again, too, if we're going to throw those sidewalks onto the lot, instead of out on the road, they've got a thirteen-foot step tank that's got to be, but in between the building and the, the right-of-way, and then they can't, if somebody comes out with a concrete stoop out front and sidewalks, and you got a driveway, they're having some conflict, so they wanted us to revise those to thirty-five-foot depth, so that's kind of, kind of where we went back on that, and also, during a meeting we had with some of the residents out there, the property owner there to the, let's see here, to the north of the entrance there, Mr. Wade, we agreed to plant shrubs along his six-to-eight-foot-tall white pine staggered twelve-foot along, I think he had like a two-hundred-foot opening that he wanted buffered, so we've got that shown on these plans, and also, I think Doug alluded to a little bit a while ago about, the homes are still the same home sizes that, that are approved from the get-go, the covenants and restrictions are fourteen-hundred square-foot minimum, that's currently what's there now, without changing anything, so we're going to keep, we're keeping the same restrictions, the same houses, the other thing that we, that come in our meeting a couple of months ago with Doug and all of us there, was that there was an agreement on the front lots of the subdivision, both Section One, it's already pre-developed, and then this section up to that Cayman Drive intersection, the, all of those lots from Thompson Road to there will be all solid brick, that was an agreement with the previous subdivision, so they're keeping it same over here also, so all the lots there will have totally all brick and stone, with a minimum downstairs, one floor is a thousand square foot, that's still the same zoning. That's still the same zoning. That is really, kind of really the gist of it. If y'all have any questions, I'll answer those questions. But we're, like I said, the covenant restrictions, we're not changing any of that. The homes are still the same, same type of homes going to be built throughout the subdivision, the same density. We're actually minusing a handful of lots based on the step system, the existing step system will only handle 155 lots, so we've just basically condensed some of these lots down where you actually can build on them. A lot of that area up in the top, after they got in there and started clearing, is just unbuildable. Rock, pinnacle rock features, hence the name of the subdivision.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
All the glitches been marked out?
I'm sorry?
All the glitches been marked out?
Yes, sir. As far as I know, I think John had a conversation with the, Mr. Wade, like I alluded to, about the type of trees. He may want a different type of tree, but John's working with him on that. If he, you know, if there is a different species, we agreed that night, that I think it was white pines. But he'd mentioned, John, that maybe a little different tree, but either way, you know, we're going to plant some along his buffer line. And we've, Doug was there, but we've alluded to everything that was requested from those meetings, and the phone calls that I've got, I've incorporated into this book, and sent this book back out to the people that were there, and had them go over. As far as I know, everybody's...
Jamie, other than the buffer, and maybe some of the content of the house, is anything else that anybody else brought out from out there, neighbor-wise, or?
Well, it was, the big thing was the, they bounced back and forth about the square footages, wanted to match the style of homes, they wanted to match the lots up front from the entrance, Thompson Road. They wanted to be all brick, like was previously approved in that first section and built, so they, you know, Park Trust and them agreed to break those. It's all brick, and the screening, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. I mean, we provided, you know, a lengthy meeting, we addressed their comments, I sent them back to everybody that was at that meeting, and got their input again, and tweaked that, and went and sent the final draft over to Doug, and I think we've addressed and answered everybody's questions that has contacted me. There's one other, it's a minor issue that I allude to in the staff comments, it's regarding the name of the existing road that would tie into the plan development. It's called, I think, RK Sixena Drive. They have a different name for it in their plan development. Now, at this point, it's just a stub street with two corner lots, but it looks like both those corner lots are actually addressed off the main road, so it would be just a simple matter. If they wanted to change that name or that it extended, it would just be a simple matter of a plaque correction. So, just, again, that doesn't really affect what he's doing here, but that was something that we did point out to the applicant.
Hey, one thing, after Doug, I just thought of something after you said it. One thing they alluded to, Petis, was that they would like, the residents out there would like us somehow to get the traffic back to Highway 90, well, was it 231? Quicker, was it right?
99.
99, okay, I said it right. 99, quicker than we could, because we don't have, you know, we don't own the property, the schools behind that, so, you know, so, well, we'd kind of, we'd said the same thing. But anyhow, that was brought up, and that was really the only thing that we couldn't help with. Other than that?
Questions for Jamie, while he's up here? Thank you. We are conducting a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against may come forward. State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. I've spoken in public before, and I usually don't get emotional about things that hit this close to home. This one does both literally and figuratively. I live at 1102 Pinnacle Hills Drive, and on Lot 59, at the corner of Pinnacle Hills and the proposed Cayman Drive. I was not informed of any meeting that took, that took place on 129. I was not able to address or express any concerns then. The concerns that I do have, and that I have spoken with the members of my community before the original meeting I came to, and then before this one, I did everything I could to knock on every door in my neighborhood to discuss this with the individuals. I asked a lot of them to come, some of them have, and I thank them for it. I bought my house in September of last year, and when I bought it, I bought it to be in a neighborhood of established families. What I read in the homeowner's agreement that I signed, I believe stated that the minimum home size was to be around 1,850 square feet. This proposal that I originally received from the board, after calling and requesting it, shows 1,700 square feet. That has since been reduced 18% since this last revision to 1,400 square feet. I do know, and I've heard the express, that some of the lots are the reason that this easement and this reduction since this original proposal, I would have discussed, and would have liked to have discussed, any issues that I would have had to maybe have addressed these issues, instead of coming up here and being a little emotional at first. When I bought my house, I wanted it to be a forever home. The last two houses that have sold have been the, I believe in the neighborhood, have been the two next door to me. There are around seven lots at the beginning of the neighborhood. Those are required to have a brick and stone face only. They are not required to be all brick, and they are not all brick. My house was originally considered in that, and I have stone and brick front, and siding around the rest of the exterior. I am concerned about the traffic and the amount of extra houses that are being pushed into this development, and I'm concerned that the reason that this proposal has become, has come across is due to the inability to build in a previously planned area in the back of the neighborhood. The original plans I saw for the neighborhood, when I went through to build my house, showed three sections, one of which being at the rear of the existing properties, and then the rest of it being behind me. I originally believed those to be pretty much a one-to-one match. You know, the house behind me, now, the way I look at it, according to this, I will now have a house and a half behind me. Now, I may be able to still see the trees, but I'm concerned about the cost of our houses and the effect that that will have. And at the last two houses that have sold at an average price of $86 a square foot, at this point, I'd be looking in, since September, at about 10,000, or, excuse me, a 10% decrease in the value of my house. I thank you for your time, and I believe I speak for the residents of Pinnacle Hills when I do express a little bit of concern in the way that this is proposed. Thank you.
Record, please.
My name is Steve Alford. My friends and my neighbors call me Sam. Are there any questions?
So, is your main concern the, the change in the square footage of these proposed new homes compared to what your covenants say?
As, as far as numbers go, yes, sir, that is the difference. The other concern, and, you know, unless I missed a piece of mail, is, you know, I don't feel that I've had the chance to express my concerns to the individuals proposing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against, please come forward.
I bought my house about three years. My name is Taki Minter.
Name and address, please.
My name is Taki Minter, and I live at 1125 Pinnacle Hills. And just like my neighbor Sam here, I expected to move to a place that was a rural area that didn't have that many houses out there, and we loved it, we fell in love with the house, we want to live there forever. And me, as well as pretty much all the other neighbors, have small kids who play in the street, and we all want to kind of keep it that way, and we don't want too much traffic. It's already a lot of traffic that comes out there, and these people don't live there, they're just driving through. And there's only one way in, one way out. And it's not, it's not that big of a neighborhood, so with more houses stuffed behind my neighbor's house, it would just, it would make that much more traffic to a one-out neighborhood. So, I'm just kind of against it, but I'm also, like my neighbor Sam here, I don't want our value of our houses to go down, so I wanted to make sure I was here to speak on behalf of the rest of our neighborhood. And I didn't know about the meetings, or get-togethers, or anything, but I would like to have phone numbers and stuff, so I could at least have some input. I work at nighttime, but I would just like to, you know, have some more input on what's going on with the neighborhood. That's all. I just wanted to express my opinion.
Now, what was your address?
It's 1125. I live towards the back of the subdivision, and they're actually clearing out lots, but I don't think they're going to build houses there now. And there's piles of rocks, stuff everywhere out there. And it was just trees, and it looked really good, but now, now it's just, it's just big piles of mess, so...
You got no notification of the community meeting?
No, I haven't. Sam here, he knocked on my door today and let me know what was going on, so I threw my clothes on and rushed on up here, and I didn't go to work today, so today was a great day to have this meeting. So, I came on up to show my support in the neighborhood.
Coming up?
Yes, sir, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Anyone else wishes to speak? Jamie, you have something else?
I, for one, want to apologize, because I sent out, I didn't mean for them not to get mailers. I sent out mailers to Doug, and I sent the same ones out to the same people, and, you know, they didn't show up, or didn't get information to show up to help, you know, contribute to that. But I do have the covenant restrictions here. It is 1,400 square feet, so that we're doing the exact same house, exact same house, and square footage, and type of homes that they're putting in there. We're not adding more traffic, we're actually reducing it. We're actually look, you know, a handful more. The step system can only handle 155 lots, and we're not putting more houses in there. Same amount of traffic's going to come out there. It's not any more traffic than what's approved. They're building the same thing, the covenant restrictions, the same houses, same brick, same size, same square footage, with just more open space.
So, Jamie, you, the covenants you have before you are the...
Yeah, right here, I've got the recorded covenants, 1,400 square feet.
They're the same ones that folks got on the Pinnacle Phase 1, or the existing subdivision, that when they, when they bought property...
This was amended, I think, in, was it 11, John? I think somewhere around 11, 2011.
Yeah.
Which was 14, I mean, and it's, that's what they're building out there now, it's last three years.
Anybody that's moved in there the last three years, that was part of their closing package.
This is currently what's approved, yeah.
And it does clearly say 1,407 square feet.
Yeah, I mean, I've got it, the recorded one highlighted.
Jamie, this is going to connect with Cayman Drive, so there'll be another entrance exit out. I mean, they can come out this way.
Yeah, correct. There'll be two, they'll have their own entrance, actually.
And I think that first gentleman that spoke, he must live in that Lot 59, then, where it's going to come out. So, that street is going to connect, but that's, is that a stub, that's a stub street now?
This is a stub street, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Jamie, you said that was amended, so at one point in time, this development, the first development...
Actually, I think it was 1,650 is what it was before, you know, and I don't know exactly, but...
Oh, it's been down, the size of the house has been adjusted at some point in time.
Yeah, from 1,650 to 1,400. So, it's currently at 1,400.
And again, just understand that this was a R15 development, this was not a PUD at the front end, so that's really outs, anything that's outside of our hands, as far as anything we could have done.
But that horse is already out of the barn, if you want to talk about that more or less. And I don't know if these gentlemen have seen this, but the second gentleman spoke about one way in, one way out, but there's fixed to be two ways in, two ways out, so...
Two ways, two entrances, so...
So, it looks to me like the people in this section aren't going to come down...
Not going to come through theirs, they're going to come...
They're more likely going to go down this new street, Seales, or whatever drive, and stuff.
It's very similar, the same layout, other than you got more, more open space. Actually, you know, a couple less lots, so you actually got less traffic. And like I said, I, you know, I apologize for them not getting them, I can understand people living and being frustrated for not getting that, and I'll be glad to get them a booklet, so we can kind of massage any of their concerns over before the public hearing, if, you know, if they're got, you know, issues.
Jamie, I'd like for that to happen, if we could, if we could, you know, maybe if, if there, several of those people didn't get the notice, you know, something happened or whatever.
It sounds like it. Like he said, it's probably several, and I don't know, to be honest, what happened. We had several people that came to the meetings that night, and...
They didn't, if you could make that extra effort, that they could be, answer those questions they have.
Yeah, I'll get with him and have him to get with several, you know, their residents, and email me, and then I can email them the booklets, and then we can try to meet again and before the public hearing.
Get those questions answered.
Anything else, Jamie? Any questions for Jamie? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, declare the public hearing closed. Any follow-up by staff?
Not unless there's questions, sir.
And just for the gentleman in the audience, anybody watching, this will go to the county commission, and will be another public hearing at that point in time.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And it'll be a whole other, this is just a recommending body on this issue, and the final decision will come at the county commission meeting, and...
A, whatever the may, I don't have it right in front of me, but the may do, yes, sir.
Second, third, 10th, May, more than likely, something like that.
Looks like Thursday, May the 15th, is when it'll go before the county commission.
With that being, we're not adding any houses, we're going with the same house that's approved at this point in time, and I don't think anybody wants a sidewalk just 12-foot off the curb, back in the middle of their yard. I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Have a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
And a second?
I have a question. On the page one of the booklet that they gave us, it says, "The number of single-family detached dwelling units, existing 65, proposed 95, for a difference of 30." So, how can we say that we're not increasing number of houses?
Yeah, I believe what's happening, and the applicant can speak more to this, if you look on that page, you see that area in the back, it says, "Future RM zone." My understanding is they're not going to be able to develop anything else further back in that area, so the houses, they're losing their, they're gaining back with this zoning plan, but as Jamie said, it's a few less than was originally approved.
On that same page, the purple box is not going to be developed?
That's my understanding, yes, ma'am. And I don't see Jamie's talking, but that's from what they've been telling us this time, this whole time, sir.
The three phases, we've got two, basically, at this point in time.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it depends on how they decide to phase out. They may not do the entire PUD as one big phase, they may phase that out, so it could still be multiple phases.
Can I answer that question?
Sure.
John Haney, please come forward.
I'm John Haney, representing the Park Trust Development. Just to answer your question, Ms. Allen, it gives you, it's a little misleading showing the area in the back that says, "Future," or whatever. We aren't planning to develop that at all. The step system is built completely out for 155 lots, so that's all that can ever be built in there, because the step system is maxed out. So, it does sort of mislead you when you see 65, and now 95, but it's a net loss in the subdivision of about five lots when it's all built out. Now, I can tell you, we won't do the 95 lots all at one time. It'll probably be in two or three phases. And I'm sorry, these gentlemen didn't get notice, we, by the way, we worked this mail out to... out to every homeowner, the address we've got, and we had several people come that night for the community meeting. Now, I'm sorry they didn't get the information, we'll be glad to take their addresses and get something to them before the public hearing, certainly.
John, any questions for John while he's up here? Thank you, John. Ready to vote? We have a motion to approve with all staff comments. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven B, draft zoning ordinance amendments, the item number is one-four-dash-five-zero-zero-one, childcare centers as accessory uses with community assembly uses. Planning staff is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning commissioners will recall that at our last day meeting, we talked a little bit about accessory daycare uses for what are called community assembly type uses, which are typically what we see, that's where we see our religious uses. I've included a memorandum in there, it's pretty similar to the one that we provided you at the last meeting, so I'm not going to go into just a whole lot of detail as far as that goes. But you'll recall that we discussed the possibility of whether or not we wanted to look at a daycare as accessory to a church, we'll just say that, so I don't have to say community assembly over and over. But what we talked about was a couple of options, either allowing a community, a church, excuse me, allowing a daycare by right in an approved church use or by special exception, which would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. When we did our research on this, we found it both ways. Some communities would do it where as long as the church use was approved, the daycare could go in there without any further approvals. Or we also saw where if there was a church approval, then they still would have to go back through the approval process to establish a daycare as a accessory use to that. We discussed it a little bit and there seemed to be some hesitation along the, among the planning commissioners that maybe that by right wasn't as good an option, they looked at the possibility of looking at some regulations that would allow it by special exception to the BZA. So what I did in the memo that's in your agenda, agenda packets, was kind of did it both ways. On the second page, you'll see that the first set of amendments we proposed would be to the use specific standards, which is Section eleven oh three. Now, this particular set of amendments right here would be regardless of which way you went. If you went by right or if you went special exception, either way you'd still want to have these. Where it's kind of just some, some performance standards for them, if you will. On-site, off-street area shall be provided for vehicles to load and unload. Vehicles for vehicular parking access to and from shall be arranged so that vehicles don't have to back out onto the road, they can go forward. Daycare centers have to demonstrate that adequate wastewater capacity exists to serve the use. That's really important, especially in regard to septic tanks and step systems. And then we wanted to put kind of a blanket statement in there about all regulations for childcare facilities that are enforced through other agencies that are not the planning department, such as the Tennessee Department of Human Services have to be met. It's something that we always say at meetings that regardless if you get approval here, this does not give you a blanket approval for all of the regulations that may be out there, but we thought that it'd be good to hit, to go ahead and to specifically state that in there. Really, the, I guess, the meat of the decision really would depend on which direction you go from there. If you wanted to go by right, and on the back page you'll see, on the top, you'll see that those are the amendments that would have to be made. And the amendments themselves are fairly similar, the wording's just a little different. In chapters four through eight, we would just put a statement in there that childcare centers, accessory to legally established community assembly uses would be subject to the provisions that we just talked about in eleven oh three. And if you wanted to go the route of special exception, really the only change is that you just put the childcare centers are, are accessory to legally established community assembly uses by special exception, subject to the provisions of, again, eleven oh three, and then also to fourteen oh eight, which deal with the special exception regulations to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Staff, either way you want to go with it is fine. I think just from an administrative standpoint, it'd be easier if we just did it by right. The, the folks that I've talked to that do it by right seem to be pretty happy about how it functions, but I'm going to be perfectly satisfied if you go with the, with the special exception route as well. So really, it's, it's up to the commission how, which way you want to go with this. I don't think it's controversial one way or the other, but I understand both routes.
Want to go through the BZA, what's the process for somebody to apply for this? And including fees and the steps and timelines?
Right.
What's that?
Yes, ma'am. The Board of Zoning Appeals, they meet every month. The deadline is, is the day after the previous meeting, so if you had a meeting, like, well, example, we had our Board of Zoning Appeals for this month, this past Wednesday. So the deadline for the next meeting in May was the day after Thursday. There's, it's a one-time application fee of three hundred dollars for a special exception and you go through that process, it's a one-meeting, one-meeting process, not two like a rezoning is. Generally, you make your application one month and you get approved the next. That's generally how it works. Now, if there are requirements, like if they want to, if they have to do site plan approval, if they're expanding their parking lot, those kind of things, depending on what they're doing, you know, that may have to come back before you, it may not. If it's simply just, you know, retrofitting a portion of the building to make sure that it can fit a daycare in it, you probably won't see anything about it. If they're actually adding on and the expansion's large enough, they would have to come back to you just during a daytime planning commission meeting, then that could happen. So there may be some more associated fees with that, but just the special exception fee itself is a three hundred dollar fee.
Staff have a preference, you know, you said you didn't, but is there a leaning?
Well, I think the, the way I lean more is toward the by right, but again, I, I won't lose any sleep if it's by special exception either, so.
While I respect and appreciate the need for daycares, especially at churches, it's a great place, but if a person wants to go out into the county and open a daycare somewhere, it would be probably extremely difficult, much more difficult than opening a church.
It probably would, just because daycares, just standalone uses are only allowed in office professional and in the commercial industrial zone, they're not allowed in single-family residential areas.
Churches pretty much has a right with certain restrictions-
Depending on the size, yes, sir.
To put it about anywhere. So if a person were to open a very small church, they could also have a very large daycare, right?
Well, a lot of that would be dependent on state regulations, but there's not anything in here that would, if you went by right, there's nothing in here that would limit the size or anything like that. So, I mean, I, to answer your question, I guess, yes, they could do that.
I think you see where I'm going.
Yes, sir, I do.
I think somebody who had intention, high enough desire to open a daycare center could certainly circumvent the intentions of our regulations by simply declaring themselves a church and suddenly they're in business-
I mean, I guess, you could say that, yes, sir.
Without all of the restrictions that a legitimate business has to go through to get established here.
As far as rezoning and those kind of things, I mean, could that happen? I guess you could say it could, yes, sir.
Al, if they went before the Board of Zoning Appeals, would the process have some sort of check valve in there to prevent that?
Well, the Board of Zoning Appeals has the ability to place reasonable conditions on special exception applications. One of them could be the number of children that are being served, maybe the building's not that large. Of course, a lot of that's dependent upon state regulations anyway, as far as how many children can be there. But, but yes, they have that ability to put conditions on, on approvals, yes, sir.
What suggestion do you have to prevent someone from circumventing the process?
Well, I mean, currently at this point, I've never seen that particular situation that you're describing happen where somebody tries to establish a church just so they can establish a daycare. Of course, right now, they wouldn't be able to do it anyway because our regulations don't allow it. But, I mean, if that is your concern, and again, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with it either way you want to go, then I think it would probably be better to go with the special exception route, because that way the board will get a shot at everyone that wants to establish in a church. You know, they'll be able to look at it and say, okay, this is where your player is going to be, do you need some extra screening perhaps, those kind of things? So if, if that's the concern that you have, that would probably be the best way to handle it.
If there's already an established church in a neighborhood and this would generate a lot of Monday through Friday traffic that the neighborhood was not anticipating when they moved there by not doing it with a special exception, if it was a use by right.
If it was a use by right, they could just establish it, correct. If it was a special exception, then there, of course, there'd be a public hearing, kind of similar to the process we're having tonight on the rezoning. And even for this, we'll still have a public hearing on this, you know, after discussion. But, but, but yeah, I mean, I think you've, you've, you've got it as far as the process goes, you know, without going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, someone just comes in and says this is what we want to do, provided they can get approval from the state and all that they have to do, then it's, it's out of our hands at that point.
This, this has to have a public hearing, are we having a public hearing today?
Yes, sir, this, this has been scheduled for public hearing tonight, plus there would be another one at the Board of Commissioners next month.
Okay.
I'm very intrigued by Mr. Everwater's thoughts and I believe he's right on. I mean, what do you have to do to become a church? I mean, you and your wife want to put a sign up and claim you've got a church in your living room?
Well, home, home worship, I mean, quite frankly, there's a lot of people around the county that I would dare say probably have some sort of a gathering at their home, like a Bible study or something like that, obviously we don't have any concern about that. If you're starting to put yourself out there as a church, of course, then you have to start thinking about how you're going to provide parking. Church uses do have screening requirements and those kind of things.
Thank you, if somebody wanted to do that, and that would be the same parking they would use for the daycare, you know, and stuff, so I'm agreeing with everybody else. I believe it ought to go to the BZA and not, and not create another loophole.
I'm for doing it like the city's doing it. I think it's just less confusion for those who operate in city and county, just follow their, which would be, they'd have to seek approval.
Well, right, yeah, Murfreesboro does it that way, Smyrna does it by right. So, I, I mean, when you say the city, I'm assuming you mean Murfreesboro.
Yeah, city, Murfreesboro, yeah.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll conduct our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number one-four-dash-five-zero-zero-one. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this request from the planning staff, please come Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now we're open for anything, pretty much, so.
Motion? Are we still chatting?
Motion.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we require that daycares must be approved as per the last, on eleven oh three C dash four, which would be the last group of chapters on our handout, right?
Basically, what you'd be, you're requesting that we use the special exception route.
Yeah, everything would be a special exception.
Okay, I can take care of it from there. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, everyone understand? That is the BZA route, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Ready? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you for that discussion, it was meaningful. Looks like we're ready for item number eight, staff reports or business?
Yes, sir, I do have one item that we kind of wanted to talk about here under other business. Emailed you a copy of a memorandum late last week and there's a copy of that memo on your tables tonight regarding planned unit development issues. Our PUD regulations were rewritten under our old ordinance back in two thousand and nine. We pretty much moved them unchanged over to the new ordinance that we're under now, our twenty thirteen ordinance, with the exception of some amendments, minor amendments, as you recall, open space requirements, we had some discussion on that. The quality of our application materials that we receive now versus what we used to receive is greatly improved and that was one of the reasons that we made those amendments, was to, to helping with that process. But one of the issues that we've come to recognize here over the last couple of years really, has to do with some of the proposed amenities in these PUDs, be it sidewalks, streetlights, something like that. Some of those that are listed in that development pattern book, we're not seeing being installed in a timely manner. Now, we've seen this become more of an issue over the last few years, really because of the economic downturn. A couple of developments, you know, have been, went bankrupt, you know, the bankers bought them and then they start selling the lots. And then the, the people that buy the lots are really just building on the homes, on the home sites themselves, they're not so much concerned with the, with the amenities in that subdivision. So the lots are often purchased, a lot of the times they may not even know that they're required to begin with. There are phasing requirements for open space in PUDs that exist in our zoning ordinance. However, we're of the opinion at this point that any pattern books going forward from this point should include a bulleted checklist of what amenities are going to be proposed in development and a better phasing schedule as to when they're going to be installed. Maybe, a lot of the times, like for instance, the pattern book that we see, we saw today, it has a pretty good overview of what they're going to be doing, but kind of what we were thinking was a separate page or something like that that actually has this particular amenity by this time in this phase, this particular amenity in this phase, something to that effect. It would give us a little more certainty in that, when they were going to be installed, which would also provide clarity for the developers, clarity for the people who are going to be buying out there and hopefully try to resolve some of these issues. Kind of what we would like to talk to you tonight, and Mr. Hill may have some additional comments he might want to make when, when I'm done with this, we'd like some, just some direction from you on how to handle situations for some of these existing PUDs that are out there. Specifically, would you like us to require that any uninstalled amenities in a PUD be installed before new phases are submitted for approval? A second option could be that request an installation schedule whenever a new section were to come in to us for review, for those amenities that have not been installed yet, maybe a better idea as to when they would like to move forward with those. We did hear some comments back from, from Mr. Everwater, he made some pretty good points, some things to consider, I, I won't put words in his mouth, I'll go ahead and let him address that. But that's really what we kind of wanted to talk to you about a little bit tonight and Eric, I didn't know if you had anything further on that.
Well, I think Doug said it great, and as far as the timeframe, we've, I think we've kind of learned this through experience too, we think that the best approach to a timeframe is by lots, is to say at sixty lots, at seventy lots. You know, we, we put a timeframe on one for, you know, two years, well, that was in two thousand and eight, and so things changed between oh eight and two thousand and ten, so, so we, we think the best approach and, and Mr. Haney's stated this this evening, he's done some of these, has some experience, and I think he talked, talked to me earlier, I think that's kind of the approach that they take a lot of times, is the, kind of looking at the lots and, and not using a phase or a timeframe, but looking at a lot. The other issue that we've kind of dealt with some is a little bit more detail on our open space and we're, like Doug said, we're getting a lot better than we were, but you know, open space, it's not mode, it's not very open, you know, and so maybe looking at maybe a maintenance plan or just something to the effect of, you know, that we're, we're getting what, what, what we think we're getting, you know, just to make sure that, that the amenities package is, is what we, what we think it is. I think, I think going forward, like Doug said, what we kind of like guidance on is, you know, is, as we get, let's say, section four of a PRD that's, was supposed to have a playground lot, I think Doug and I would kind of like to have some direction from you guys if, if, I think as people start submitting these new phases, that it's probably a good time to be asking, you know, will you give us a timeframe on, you know, because we're trying to kind of nail this down about when, because the homeowners are calling us and we're saying we don't know. And so, so that's, that's kind of what's driving this from Doug and I, it's the questions that we receive, you know, from homeowners calling, so when's our pool going in? And we say we don't, we don't know, so.
Eric, what's the rule about roads on the, like when you do the final top coat, that's after everything's a hundred percent or?
Yes, and, and that wouldn't be involved in this, I mean, that would be completely separate. I mean, this would just apply to, you know, amenities and things like that. The closure of a PRD from engineering side is topping of those roads and the acceptance by the road board, and that's at the very end.
Well, because, I mean, just for example, I'm looking at the development that's here in front of us and so, you know, depending on where they start building, you know, they might start building nowhere near where the common space is going to be. So, so would they skip past those lots? You know what I'm saying? Would they skip past those lots and go build it? Or do you want, but you don't necessarily want them to intentionally stay away from those lots so that they don't have to build it? So, I don't know, I'm kind of thinking fifty percent, it's just-
Yeah, and, and I think it's, I, I don't think we need to use this opportunity to necessarily move it up. I mean, I, I don't think we're saying that it necessarily needs to be sooner in the development at all, we just, we just think, we probably, we just need to, we just need to put a timeframe somewhere, you know, and it may be, let's say it's a hundred lots. move it up. I mean, I, I don't think we're saying that it necessarily needs to be sooner in the development at all. We just, we just think, we probably, we just need to, we just need to put a timeframe somewhere, you know, and it may be, let's say it's 100 lots. It may be at 70 lots or 90 lots. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think Doug and I have an issue with that either way, but it's just that we're, we're putting somewhere, somewhere that, that we can kind of gauge as how close we are.
Um, because when you think about it, just from a construction standpoint, ideally, I'd like for them to develop it as they're developing those lots around there, so that you're containing your construction traffic and not having construction traffic next to finished common area.
Right.
So, but like I said, I don't want, I don't want to drive them, I don't want to incentivize them to not develop, or to develop those lots less.
Right.
Eric, when you talk about not lots, is that when the lot's developed and approved, or is that when the house on the lot is built? Because that's two different times.
Uh, I would say, I would say when the house is built. Because we kind of gauge ours by building permits. I mean, that's our, that's engineering, that's our final leverage.
Is that built or sold with a CO?
Right.
It's due to the CO? Is that what you're thinking?
The builder, yeah. Because we, we release lots in general to be sold, you know, when the final plats, because even after you guys approve the final plat, we still hold on to the, to the lots until everything, all the Ts are crossed and everything. We release that. They can sell lots and start building homes, but before we release that final CO and David Jones monitors that, that's our last, that's our last leverage, so.
I think we've got a number of issues here that we've looked at. Keeping in mind that a PUD is a, well, the P stands for planned, and it often has a lot of amenities that a regular neighborhood doesn't have, and they should, those amenities need to be, of course, addressed individually in the master plan when it's submitted. Now, it's very difficult to come in and say, we want all of these things done by a specific time. It depends on what the individual item is. For instance, streetlights, well, those should be done early before homes are under construction and traffic goes down the streets. So, streetlights should be done as street signs are, are erected. When you get into sidewalks, that's another issue. Everybody wants the sidewalks, but if you put the sidewalks in before the house is built, then the truck traffic goes over the top of the sidewalk and, and probably cracks it or makes it out of level. Or, and then when they're digging utilities, they undermine the foundation of that, and later on in the future, two, three, five years down the road, you have a concrete, you have a sidewalk that's out of level or starts to break up. So, you don't want to put those in before the house is built. So you think, well, you know, how about we get to a certain point, to your point, we get 50% of the houses built and we require all those amenities to be in. Well, in most cases in this county, the developer has developed the neighborhood and sold those lots to other builders. So if the, we get into a, a position then where the developer has to move on and start planning for this, his next phase, because it can take nine months, if it moves really quickly, oftentimes it takes more than a year to get the next phase ready. Well, he has to be planning for that next phase. As soon as the planning is completed on the first phase, he's already planning on the second phase, and they'll be under construction, and he's already investing money in the second phase. So you can't hold him up. It wouldn't be fair, especially in good economic times, to hold him up approval on the next one. So, and if those builders don't build on their lots, you're waiting on 50% of the builders to get built, then essentially the developer can't move on and get the next phase developed. And then you've still got the issue with, you've got to put the sidewalks in on lots that don't have houses on. So I don't think that, from a practical standpoint, that doesn't, that won't work. Each of these has to be addressed individually. Sidewalks, I understand they're a concern, and everybody wants them, wants them done as quickly as possible, but you can't do them as quickly as possible. So how did we get that off of the county's back? Well, the county doesn't want to be in the sidewalk business. We've expressed that. We want them out of the right of way. We don't want responsibility for them. Well, that's simple enough that you turn that over to the Homeowners Association. Our regulations already require an HOA to be established and a management company in place, and they are responsible for, usually in, in, in the restrictions, they will say something like, you have three years from the time that the plat is approved to install a sidewalk. So either you build a house and you get your sidewalks installed right away, or if you don't build a house and you want to hold on to that vacant lot, you have to put the sidewalks in, and then you tear them up and fix them when the house is built. So, and then when the, if, if the sidewalks break down the road, it's the HOA's responsibility to enforce that those are brought back to the neighborhood standards. So let's stay out of the sidewalk business if we can.
I'm with you on that. And sidewalks is not the best amenity to talk about with this. We're, we're talking about pools, totlites. It's the biggest, the biggest thing we're looking at, and that's, yeah, sidewalks is, that's a whole other, that's a whole other ball of wax. But this, really, more amenity centers, you know, pools, pavilions, things like that. And I'll tell you, one of the issue, big issues we're having that's, that's started this whole conversation, is a developer change, and the original developer that signed up for all these amenities is gone, nowhere, nowhere to be found. And so the new developer, it's, Doug and I are like, well, do we, at what point do we, are we going to have to make them put in the amenities? They're not talking about it. They're just, they just want to keep bringing in new sections, and they're not talking about it. And so, we, we just thought now is a good time to talk with you guys to kind of get some clarity about, you know, do we need to, the next time they bring a section in, do we need to say, hey, we would like for y'all to give us a timeframe. When are you going to put a pool in? We're not saying you have to do it now. We're just saying we want something, something to tell us that you're going to do it, because that's the one that the homeowners are calling, wanting to know where their pool's at, and we, we don't have any answers. And it's not the developer that signed up for it. That's, that's the tricky one. So it's a, it's kind of a second party here.
And my suggestion on something like that would go to perhaps an 80%, 75% completion, and then you have to have your pools installed. Pool is an optional thing, you know, it's not essential for safety or, or anything else. That's a homeowner convenience. But here again, we're enforcing, we're enforcing things that are not the county's responsibility to enforce. We, we just want to enforce, you know, roads and safety and that sort of thing. But if you had a 75% rule, that gives the developer ample time to get, recover a lot of his initial expenses in the roads and that sort of thing, and he can accumulate some cash to start putting in a nicer amenity package. The other thing is, if you put in swimming pools and lots of landscaping, there's not enough money being generated by the Homeowners Association to support a pool, which is very expensive, and there's not very many people using them. So you need to have enough people to support that. So it needs to be later in the development rather than sooner. I know there's always somebody in it that wants it now. As soon as they move in, they want their pool. But when they have to pay a $4,000 a month HOA fee to support it, they suddenly get cold feet to that. So I think each of the items that you bring up have to be addressed separately. I don't think that it's, it's, you're able to come in and, and, and put a line in the sand and say it has to be done.
And that's kind of like Doug said, you know, upfront on our new ones, you'll have a detailed list, you know, the, this amenity at so many lots, you know, at this point, we'll just kind of lay that out, and I, I think that's the goal. It is. What, the reason we want to talk to you guys now is like, in 75%, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me, if that's what you guys wanted to go with. But we would like to be able to tell a developer, instead of, in PRDs that are being built currently, if they're at 50%, I would like to tell them now, it's 75% is when we're going to expect that, and not tell them at 75% for, you know, a $50,000 pool or whatever, you know.
That's 75% of the entire development?
Uh, I mean, I'm just...
I would think it would be the entire development myself, not of a section.
I know out my way, Liberty Heights, Liberty Station is, is a 700, 800 lot subdivision, and they put in at least their first pool. There may be another one coming toward the front end because they had 80, 90 houses, and, and from what I've been told, until they get to a certain threshold, it's the developer's responsibility for maintenance of the pool. And once it crosses, crosses, you know, X number of houses, it hands over to HOA, so there's not a $4,000 a month fee for an HOA member. But, you know, if you're dealing with a big development, Evergreen Farms has been being built for 20 years out there now, and they're still going, you know, and, and somebody's kids could grow up and be gone. It could be 10 years and still no pool. So I think we ought to think about that.
I like using the lots.
Pretty in-depth as far as the size of the development, because, you know, somebody could buy the house and, and it'd be 10, 12 years. It's not acceptable to me about when the pool comes in, you know.
One thing with a different developer, I mean, to me, they inherit, you know, whatever they've come into. And so if, I mean, that's, that's the, the big ticket. And of course, they may argue about this or that, of, that's not their situation, that's not their deal. Well, if they're coming into this package from another developer, I mean, they're, they're assuming everything else that, that's already been done. And that, that's the, that's the carrot out in front of them, you know, to, to purchase the rest of it, or whatever they did, or to become another partner, or that this partner slide out and they buy the control and interest, however, however it's done. But I mean, to, to me, whoever that new developer is, it's, it's their baby.
Because we've never spelled it out before. That's the hard thing. We've, we've had a few of these that are changing hands recently. You know, people come in and they want to, you know, kind of look at the books and what, what all is required. And you can see what's required, but because we never put a, a time on it, you know, they're like, well, at what point do I have to do that? And, you know, we, we don't know right now. And so that, that's what really we're, we just kind of want to bring up and talk with everyone. It's, I think the new ones is going to take care. I think if we just kind of do a list, you know, kind of, and try, make our best guess, Jim, you know, just do the, let the engineer and the developer work out, you know, if they think that whatever percentage is, is appropriate, and do that. But, but it's these ones that we're having to go back into that we, we didn't set a timeframe. It's just, Doug and I just felt like it was appropriate to talk to you guys about it, and just kind of let you see that issue that's, that we've been dealing with, and make sure that, that we're all on the same page here.
I really like the idea of having a schedule tied to these, because I actually had the, a similar thought when we were looking at this earlier, with the, he was going to have walking trails. And so that was kind of the same thing I was thinking, which is a very low impact amenity, which could probably be put in pretty easily, I would think. So that may be one of those things in terms of scheduling and amenities, where you say, okay, this can be done sooner, this one a little bit longer. Do you know, are there other communities that have a schedule or a timeline that we could maybe look at?
I'm, I'm not sure.
We can, I'm not aware of any off the top of my head. When we went through these plan development regulations a few years ago, I mean, we were pretty thorough, looking at some, you know, professional literature that's published by the American Planning Association, talking to several communities around. I don't recall seeing anything just off the top of my head, but we can bring that back out and take a look to see if there was something that was there. We just maybe didn't incorporate it at the time.
Good idea. Surely somebody else has thought of this.
Yeah, and, you know, I just, just to be clear, you know, I don't think we're as concerned about trying to hurry up the amenities. It's just, as long as we've just got some, some kind of plan, you know, and it's...
Some kind of surety that it is going to be installed at some point, just when, because like Eric said, we're the ones that get the phone calls a lot of the times. You know, like Eric said, where's my pool? Where's my playground? Where's this? And then we have to sit there and say, well, we really aren't sure at this point, and we'd like to have a little more surety than that.
Well, it sounds like what you're really trying to achieve is a line of communication between, in your case, a new developer that has inherited an older site. And, and that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to establish by a memo, look, you're, you're expected to do these amenities, and you've given us two options in this memo, and it looks like number two, the second one, is the one we're leaning to, and that is, I'll just read it real quick for the folks at home. "A second option may be to request that an installation schedule be submitted for planning commission review for any amenities that have not yet been installed whenever a new section is submitted for review." I, I think that's all we need to vote on, and that gives you a line of communication to demand a list, because until they provide you a list, we don't have to approve anything. Approve anything being next phases that they're trying to get on the table. So that could be the wake-up call, as a friendly reminder that this is what you inherited. Ignorance is not a reason not to say, I didn't know that I had to do that. That's, when you buy property, you have to do due diligence and understand what your responsibilities are, so.
And I, I think that's a, a good option, and it just allows, like you said, for us to communicate in this, as they new, bring the next section in. We're not saying they have to do anything now. It's just, they just need to tell us, you know, what their timeframe is.
Are you comfortable with this, that schedule being unique to each development? Do you prefer that?
I think so.
Especially with the, because really what we're talking about right now, that the issues we're having are with some of the existing ones that are already out there. So, and I, I kind of agree with, with Mr. Everwater. You know, some of these things are going to be looked at almost individually, you know. Every development's going to be just a little bit different as to what amenities they're proposing. So we almost have to look at. I do like the idea of the, of the lot percentage, you know, the number of lots, you know, before 75%, if we use that, you know, these would be the amenities that we expect to have in there at that point. But the, the issues we're having are really with some existing ones, and one in particular was developed under the old regulations for plan developments before we updated them back in 2009, which is why the detail isn't as, as much as it is that we see today.
Where do we go from here? What's next?
Well, I think if, I mean, I think we've, we have a consensus here. It looks like from what the planning commission is kind of looking at, as, as far as, I think we know where to go from here. You know, I think Eric and I will be, if these, when these issues do come in for plan developments that are already on the books, and we know that there are some things out there, I think at this point, we're going to start asking for that installation schedule, about when they're going to put some of these things in. Going forward, I think what we're going to do is kind of look back at our amendments to our plan development regulations a few years ago, and kind of see the, to your point, Rhonda, as far as, you know, is this addressed somewhere else as far as how other communities handle the phasing? Maybe we just need to beef that up a little bit in our regulations, and then we can propose some amendments to that effect.
The other question that I have is, is this kind of thing, does it need to be adopted into our regulations, or is this going to be more of a policy statement?
Well, I think for what we're talking about right now, I think moving forward, I think right now it's okay as a policy. Now, if we're going to start requiring this for, of all future developments, I think we need to put something in our regulations about it. So whenever we get somebody that comes in that's looking to, to purchase an existing development, we can tell them, okay, the planning commission has, you know, we've spoken to them about this. We know there's still some amenities here. We want to see a, a schedule here as to when you're going to put these amenities in. That's something, whenever you submit a new section, that we want to see, and we know the planning commission's going to want to see. So you might as well go ahead and do it. Going forward, if we make some amendments to the regulations that require that, then that really won't be an issue going forward. We can just say, look, this is what's required of you for an application for a PUD, so this will be part of the materials that you'll actually consider when you look at it for a rezoning application. So I guess a little of both.
Josh, does it give you any concern at all that it would be a policy as opposed to all of it being in the?
Yes. It does a little bit. I think if, I mean, if the objective is that you're going to put some teeth in it, then I'm not sure just having a policy is going to allow that. If the objective is just to open up the line of communication, and hopefully then, you know, they're going to comply with the schedule that they create, then I'm comfortable with, you know, a policy. But I, I do, I would not think that if it's just a policy and we're exchanging ideas about timelines, that you could hold a future phase hostage, so to speak, without something in the regulations permitting that. So if your intent would be to hold those future phases hostage, my words, not yours, then I would think you would need to actually pass something in the regulations for that purpose.
Eric, let me ask you a devil's advocate question.
Yeah.
The, the last line of your second option says, "Review any amenities that have not yet been installed whenever a new section is submitted to review." Is there a chance where a new developer may inherit some property where amenities have not been put in, but yet all he's going to do is finish an existing partial phase, and maybe he has no desire to, to, to do a new phase? Does that kind of pigeonhole us in a corner there where he can say, well, that, yeah, I, I see that, but I'm not going to do another phase. I'm just building out this one that's halfway finished?
Very feasible. Now, what if that's the last phase? I mean, are we, and that, that would be my concern, you know, if it's the last phase and we still don't have these amenities, then who's going to do it?
Right, perhaps this option to cover that.
Possibly.
And I think, yeah, and I think the whole purpose, like Eric had said, we're just trying to get some guidance at this point. So, I mean, these are all great discussion points that are being brought up here. It's given us more to think about too, because, yeah, I mean, what happens in those situations where, well, where the economy goes down, he builds the first section? I mean, that has happened, and I don't think, I mean, not necessarily in the county, but I know that there's other areas, maybe in like Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, those areas where they had a development that started, they're going to do all these things, the first phase has started, and all of a sudden, the project has died. And then what do you do from there? So, I mean, that gives us something else to think about.
How about this? How about us kids talking right now? This is what we want you to be able to have, is, is a, a document that they have to furnish you that gives a schedule. Now, how about between now and the next meeting, or at the next meeting, you guys play with the language a little bit, and, and make sure we're covered in that rare case where they're just doing one phase, or they're, they're not, they, we don't have them where we want them.
Right.
Because there's no next phase to do. So, and then if Josh is more comfortable from us... Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely. I did have a question. Eric, is it possible to bond amenities such as swimming pools that aren't county things? If you, say if you got to the 75% stage, could you ask them to post a bond to guarantee complete, or even if you got to the 50% stage, post a bond to complete it?
Other communities, I've, I've heard of a couple of communities that do that, and so, yeah, you could, and you could say, you know, that, that pool's going to cost 100 grand, and put up 100 grand upfront and do that. And so, of course, we have, we sometimes do traffic improvements with these, one of them that we've recently been talking to about is an older one that we've proved that has some traffic improvements, and so, that was part of what brought this up. It's like, well, who's going to put that turn lane in, and when is it going to go in? And so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could, especially on something like that, I mean, it's, we could come up with a, all pools aren't the same, so it would be difficult for me to price a pool, I can price a road really good, so, so, I mean, we could ask the applicant upfront to, to possibly submit cost estimates on those things, and that, that's an option.
And something like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you may not, you probably wouldn't need that bond until you started to get a little bit nervous on future phases. If they were starting phase four or asking for phase five and haven't started on their amenities, and it's only a five-phase section, then I would be nervous and say, I think I want some sort of surety that says you're going to put that in.
Maybe that's that, kind of, what Mike was talking about, that last option, you know, when you kind of get finished at the end, maybe that's the route that we have to take, is, you know, say, well.
And I think that would, like Josh was saying, I don't, I don't think that, something like that would have to be a, or an ordinance change, I don't think you could really just say, that's a policy, we're going to start requiring a bond, because I could see developers looking at it and say, well, where does it say, I got to do a landscape or a, amenities bond, you have nowhere in your regulations, and we would say, well, it's a policy, and, you know, I don't think that would work real well, so.
I think that would, a bond would work well in the case that you have a developer that says, well, I want to do, I want it to last, I want to do 100%, you know, I want to build out everything, and then I'll come in and build, build those. And so, that's, that's the only option I can think of as far as something to assure you for us.
With all this discussion tonight, it looks like there's a lot of gray area here. It looks like it lends itself more to a policy, rather than putting something Josh talking about with teeth in it, how are we going to put teeth in something in a gray area? Some time, some timeframe that Jim was talking about makes good sense, but we could try it as a policy for a while, if it gets out of hand, then we could put teeth in it.
Let us take a look at this over the next couple of weeks, and we can come back. We may not have specific language at that point, but I think we can have a report to say, okay, we've kind of looked at this, these are some options that you could consider going forward, you know, kind of lay out a couple of different options and, and kind of see where you want to go from there. Again, tonight was really just to bring it up for discussion, to kind of get your thoughts on it. Now that we have a lot better direction than we had coming in, you know, I think we can, we can start studying this in a little more depth.
I think it's a good idea, just to bring something back, it doesn't even have to be next month, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not.
Right.
Bring something back for us to look at, and then we can digest that, and if we need to adjust that more, we can. So, let's just kind of take it one step at a time, kind of put into words some of the thoughts that we've had tonight, and then let us, you know, we like that, we don't like that, and we can just move this thing forward until we get something we want. How's that sound? Makes sense?
Thank you. I didn't have anything further.
Quick thing, Mr. Matthew Fasek is with us in the back, our new public works engineer, his third week on the job, came, came to us from Knoxville area, and so, we're excited to have him on board, and he's learned a lot about flooding in the last three weeks, and a lot more to come, so he's doing a good job.
Welcome.
Yes, the Power of Ten Summit's coming up at the end of the month, I believe it's April the 30th is the date, it's going to be at the, it's going to be at T-PAC this year, it's usually at War Memorial Auditorium. The four of you that, I think four of you have responded to me that you wanted to sign up, I have signed up, hopefully you had some kind of an email confirmation. I signed up, and I never did get one, I didn't know if I put my email address in wrong, so if none of you all got it, then maybe they're just not sending them out, I don't know. But, registration is open, for public officials, it is free. If you need the website, or if you'd like to register yourself, just, that's fine, I can get you the website, or if you want me to do it, it's real easy, I can take care of it. But, yeah, you were one of the ones I signed up, so, I think you were one too, Rhonda, I think you were one, and, yeah, Jim, you were the other. So, if anybody else would like to, to be a part of that, just let me know. That also counts as part of your, if you want to use that for your four hours of required training during the year, that does count as that. We'll provide other opportunities as well, like we did last month with the, the step presentation from David Jones with CUD, we've got some other ideas in mind, so, just, that's, we can take care of that for you.
Here's Chairman Doug, Josh, I hate to bring this up, but I, I do want to, I told the folks I'd bring it up as just a point of record. I was, I've been hit Saturday as well as today with photos and communication about our, our rock quarry out on Burnob. I don't know where we are on litigation with that. Josh, if you can give me an update on that, I'd appreciate it, but we haven't heard anything in a while, and then plus, we're, the pictures and stuff I saw were hundreds of truckloads going out to rebuild or widen the veterans parkway, and it's coming from, from the Rogers Group there on Burnob, and I'm not sure the legalities of that, they, whether that's permitted where they're doing it, and they tell me it's from a, a new borrow area, and they're taking it down, they're even blasting it at a, at a certain point, and all this, and so, you know, it's just, it's more issues. And so, I'm bringing it up here, I'll, I'll, I want you to, as far as it to be on record, but if you could give us some kind of insight, is anything else happened on the, on the lawsuit at all, or, or where are we at on that? And then, I'd, I'd just throw this out there of what, what I have here, and we'll look further and let y'all dig a little deeper, and, and I'll come by your offices and talk to you about it, so.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of information publicly, and, of course, the details of litigations are things we often would address in a, in an executive session or something like that, but in terms of the, the litigations in general, there were actually, you'll remember, two cases that deal with the rock quarry. There's the initial case that addresses primarily the setback issues that were raised when the Rogers Group brought in their plan for some changes to the quarry area. And then there was a second lawsuit filed, and that suit was filed by various landowners in the area where the landowners, and I'm, I'm kind of, I'm grossly generalizing here, but basically, they sued Rogers Group alleging nuisance and some things like that associated with the dust and other issues. The county was a defendant in that suit as well, because the issue of the underlying site plan from 1982, '83 time period was raised in the complaint as part of that case. Those cases have been ongoing for, for a while. There was a point in time where the court made a decision that the case dealing with the, I'll call it the nuisance case, should be completed before the first case. Now, the case dealing with the setbacks was actually the first case filed, but they kind of got reversed in terms of priority, and the, and the rationale there being that the, some of the issues in the nuisance case, at least potentially, could, could affect the first case, let me say it that way. And so, it was to be heard first, and the, the, the cases, I mean, things have gone on in the case, I'm not going to get into all the details here, and there have recently been some filings associated with trying to get a hearing date. And so, in fact, there's a, there's a motion scheduled in May to deal with some of those issues. So, the issue still exists, they're, they're not resolved, but the matters are moving forward, albeit rather slowly right now.
The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 29th, it's 9:00 a.m., and the mayor's over at the planning office? May be. It is the 28th, thank you. Thank you for that correction. It is the 28th, 9:00 a.m. over at the planning office. My mother-in-law just told me that we're in BlackBerry winter, you may want to pull up an extra blanket for the next couple of nights, and maybe we'll get out of this in cantis spring. Anything else?
Yeah, one quick thing, for, for the record, this, this pinnacle project was reported as Gary Farley's in District 7, pretty sure it's a District 8.
At the time, we were using the.
The old, the old map.
Yeah, and it's, we're kind of in that awkward phase where we know it's going to be changing, but I talked with the, I think I talked with the elections department about that, as far as which one we should really use, and, long story short, she said, probably be okay to continue using the existing one until the election, and then we'd start using the new ones, so, but yes, you're, I understand where you're going with it.
That will probably be September 1st when the new one, new lines will go into effect. Anything else? Thank you, we're adjourned.